I'm going to order and ask Mr. Copeland to offer the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody please stand. Place the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Each month we take this opportunity to share with you some excitement that's happening in our schools and we have a special presentation again this month of our honor graduates. The school board changed its location in March, April, and May to better accommodate the longstanding tradition of recognizing each high school's honor graduate. So instead of asking the seniors and their families to come to the school board meeting at City Hall, the board has decided to bring its meeting to each of the high school auditoriums. In March, April, we met with honor graduates at Lakeland and Kingsport High Schools and tonight we're coming to you from Nansman River High School and we'll be recognizing the honor graduates from the Warrior class of 2015. We've asked each student to introduce their parents, share their college and career plans, and tell us about their fondest memory while a student in Suffolk Public Schools. I'd now like to invite Nansman River Principal Thomas McLemore to start the introductions of tonight's honored guest.
Chairman Dubransky, Vice Chairman Copeland, Board Members, Dr. Whitney. Welcome to Nansman River High School. I want to thank you for allowing us to present our 2015 honor graduates this evening. We're very proud of all of our students here at Nansman River, but especially these outstanding young ladies and gentlemen. I would like to thank them for their hard work over the last four years and I'd like to thank the hard work of their families. At this time, I'd like to introduce Ms. Crewy, our Director of Guidance.
On behalf of the faculty and staff and students at Nansman River High School, I would like to thank you for recognizing the Nansman River High School honor graduates this evening. Currently, we have 340 students in our graduating class with 181 honor graduates. These students have earned at least a 3.0 or higher cumulative grade point average over their entire high school career. Our seniors have been accepted to a wide range of colleges, including UVA, ODU, Norfolk State, Christopher Newport, Hampton, VCU, Liberty, Regent, Virginia Tech, and George Mason University in Virginia, and others outside of the state such as University of Washington, University of Florida, University of Central Florida, Coastal Carolina, the University of Alabama, East Carolina University, Indiana Tech, Winthrop University, and Florida Gulf Coast University. With an addition of tonight, which is not in your handout, so far, our honor graduates have received over $4,503,751 in scholarship funds and grants. And hopefully, the money's still coming in. We'll find out some more next week. Our students are very busy in school and community activities in addition to their rigorous academic courses. They volunteer as instructors, hospital workers, tutors, Sunday School teachers, and camp counselors. They volunteer for Relay for Life, Edmark Hospice for Children, the March of Dimes Walk, and raise money to support their school and community activities. While some people may be concerned about what the future will be like with this new generation, I can assure you that the future is in excellent hands. I now proudly present the Nansman River High School Class of 2015 Honor Graduates.
As each student presents themselves as well as introduces their parents, we ask that the parents please stand also. All right?
Hello. My name is Richard Hyman III. My parents are Estrella and Richard Hyman. I'm currently valedictorian and after graduation, I plan to attend University of Central Florida. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is having the opportunity to excel in my education and meet all my past and current friends that will forever leave an imprint in my life.
Hello, my name is Amelia Quarle. My parents are Curtis and Tony Quarle. I am salutatorian and after graduation, I plan to attend the College of William and Mary. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is answering riddles in Ms. Francis's AP US History class.
Hi, my name's Alyssa Obley. My parents' name is William Obley. After graduation, I plan to attend VCU and my fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools is having Ms. Fickland's class, ninth grade and 12th grade.
Hello, my name is Haley Allspa. My parents are Jessie and Barbara Allspa. After graduation, I plan to attend Virginia Tech and my fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is being on the homecoming court and being the captain of the First Robotics Team.
Hi, my name is Malcolm Anderson. My parents are Jewel and Lee Anderson. After graduation, I plan to attend Norfolk State University to participate in the marching band and major in electrical engineering. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is going to Philadelphia with the marching band to participate in the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade.
Hello, I'm Anthony Artis. My parents are Charlene and Milton Artis. I plan to go into Liberty University and getting a degree in computer engineering. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is coming to high school and making a couple of new friends.
Hello. My name is Ryan Askew. My parents are Tori and Kim Askew. After I graduate, I plan to attend Old Dominion University and major in civil engineering. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is being a part of Project Lead the Way and being able to bond my classmates the past four years.
Hello, my name is Michaela Banks. My parents are Kathleen and Robert Murphy. After graduation, I plan to attend Old Dominion University and then on to law school. My fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools is playing Survivor in Ms. Francis's AP push class.
Hello, my name's Lamby. My parents are Kathy and Dennis Voel. After graduation, I plan to attend Tiawata Community College, first and transfer to Longwood University. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is to meet all the new people in America.
Hello, my name is Charles David Berlin. My parents are Elizabeth Bullaboy and Kevin Berlin. After graduation, I plan to attend ODU and major in computer science. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is our junior guidance counselor, Ms. Reed, because she worked tirelessly and endlessly to ensure that I could attend this school for my junior and senior year.
Hello, my name is Michael Betts. My parents are Brenda and George Betts. After I graduate, I plan to attend Virginia Tech to become an engineer. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is being able to be captain of the varsity swim team for four years.
Hello, my name is Jasmine Nicole Boone. My parents are Richard and Yolanda Boone. After graduation, I plan to attend James Madison University and my fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is going to be graduation.
Hello, my name is Morgan Burnett. My parents are Terry and Veronica Burnett. After graduation, I plan to attend...did I say something wrong?
Your dad.
Your father in the background was...
After graduation, I plan to attend Old Dominion University where I will major in psychology. My fondest memory at Suffolk Public Schools and Nansman River is being a part of the marching band.
Hello, my name is Kennedy Butler. My parents are Felicia and Michael Manwaring. After graduation, I plan to go to TCC to get my general education degree. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is getting the opportunity to graduate a year early.
Hello, my name is Danielle Caballero. My parents are Bobby and Patricia Caballero. After graduation, I plan to attend VCU School of the Arts and major in graphic design. My fondest memory would have to be making some of the best friends I could ever ask for.
Hello, my name is Emily Carson. My parents are Karen and Charles Carson. After graduation, I plan to attend Old Dominion University and pursue a career in the fire department. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is having Mr. McLemore as my principal.
Hello, my name is Napun Shabra and my parents are Paul and Karen Shabra. After graduation, I plan to attend VCU and become an ophthalmologist. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is making friends that will last me a long time and along with my principal, Mr. McLemore.
Hello, my name is Matthew Clark. My parents are Renee and Bill Clark. After graduation, I plan to attend VCU School of Engineering. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is First Robotics and Project Lead the Way.
Hello, my name is Macy Combs. My parents are Misty and Greg Combs. After graduation, I plan to attend Regent University to major in biophysical sciences. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is National Honor Society.
Hello, my name is Hillary Wallace Cotton III. My parents are Tony Smith Thomas and Hillary Wallace Cotton Jr. After I graduate, I plan to attend Old Dominion University for a master's degree in computer science. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is my transition from my former school to Nansman River, which afforded me a new opportunity to make new friends and meet new challenges in a new environment. I would also like to say happy birthday to my grandmother who turned 78 today.
Hello. Hello, my name is Logan Cruz. My parents are Kelly and Randy Cruz. After graduation, I plan to attend Lynchburg College and later transfer to University of Virginia to major in civil and environmental engineering. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is the First Robotics Team and my state officership through them.
Hello, my name is Darian Dean. My parent is Kim Elliott. After I graduate, I plan to attend Old Dominion University and major in exercise science. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is being president of the Beta Club here at Nansman River.
Hello, my name is Zachary Dearborn. My parents are David and Patty Dearborn. After graduation, I plan to attend George Mason University. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is sneaking into all the basketball games for free.
Hello, my name is Courtney DeLucia. My parents are Tom and Diana DeLucia. After I graduate, I plan to attend George Mason University and dual major in criminology and psychology. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory was performing in High School Musical.
Hello, my name is Kenneth Douglas. My parents are Kenneth and Alicia Douglas. After graduation, I plan to study mechanical engineering technology at ODU. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is playing varsity tennis for four years.
Hello, my name is Samson Edmonds. My parents are Samson and Monica Edmonds. After graduation, I plan to attend VCU as an undeclared major. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is a field day for AFJ RLC.
Hello, my name is Cody Edwards. My parents are Diana and Steve Edwards. After graduation, I planned to double major in engineering and theater design at James Madison University. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is having the opportunity to compete on the varsity swim team and make it to the state level.
Hello, my name is Felicia Elliott. My parents and guardians are Ricky Cooper and Lynette Elliott. After graduation, I plan to attend Liberty University and my major is still undecided. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is getting to know all of these crazy people around me.
Hello, my name is Isabel Erdman. My parent is Rebecca Bahotter. After graduation, I plan to attend the University of Virginia with a physics...I mean, sorry, with a major in physics and a minor in dance on the pre-med track. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is being a teacher cadet and having the opportunity to teach my own fourth grade class.
Hello, my name is Jasmine Amari Favors and my parents are Malik and Tammy Favors. And after graduation, I plan to attend College of University of Florida to major in microbiology. And my fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is my first day at Nansman River Orchestra for four...and I spent four years there in Wisconsin Masher for two years.
Hello, my name is Ebony Felton. My parents are Eric and Valerie Felton. After graduation, I plan to attend Virginia Commonwealth University and major in psychology. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is being in the marching band.
Hello, my name is Leonard Floyd and my parents are Valerie Short and Leonard Floyd Singer. After graduation, I plan to attend Christopher Newport University. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is playing in all the football games.
Hello, my name is Ryan James Fry. My parents are Christine Fry and Alan Fry. After I graduate, I plan to go Radford University and then transfer to Virginia Tech to study engineering. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is going to First Robotics Competition and all the fundraising leading up to it.
All right. Hello, my name is Rhian Lee Lawson. My parent is Tammy Lawson. After graduation, I plan to attend Virginia Commonwealth University and study electrical engineering. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is the First Robotics Team.
Good evening, my name is Kayla Glover. My parents are David and Paula Glover. After graduation, I plan to attend Florida Gulf Coast University to study finance and my fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory was my first band concert in sixth grade.
Hello, I'm Ryan Greening. My parents are Mike and Kelly Greening. After graduation, I intend to attend Virginia Tech and my fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools was my AP US History class.
Hello, my name is Joy Faith Gregory. My parents are Mary and James Gregory. After graduation, I plan to attend Hampton University to major in nursing and my fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is being in the marching band.
Hello, my name is Ariel Griffith. My parents are Vealka Griffith. After graduation, I plan to attend TCC's nursing program. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is Spirit Week.
Hi, my name is Paul Hall. My parents are Paul and Cheryl Hall. After I graduate, I plan to attend Old Dominion University and major in accounting. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is the friendship created through athletics.
Hello, my name is Kendra Hamilton. My parents are Tiffany and Cornelius Yancy. After graduation, I plan to go to Norfolk State University and earn a degree in nursing to become a neonatal nurse. And my fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is Homecoming Week every year at Nansman.
Hi, my name is Rachel Hamilton. My parents are Russ and Allison Hamilton. After graduation, I plan to attend Old Dominion University and continue to dental and orthodontic school. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory was being on the homecoming court.
Hello, my name is Alexis Hernandez. My parents are Renato and Donna Hernandez. After graduation, I plan to attend Old Dominion University. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is playing Gabriela Montez in Nansman River's production of High School Musical.
Good evening, my name is Kylie Hess. My parents are Dawn and Robert Hess. After graduation, I plan on attending the Virginia Art Institute and major in animation and media arts. My fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools is my English 11 class with Ms. Hodges.
Hello, my name is Austin Hyman. My parents are Chet and Colleen Hyman. After graduation, I plan to attend Christopher Newport University. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is playing on my high school varsity soccer team.
Hello, my name is Emery Hill. My parents are Nathan and Bethany Jones. After graduation, I plan to finish my associate's degree at TCC then transfer to the University of North Florida to get my bachelor's degree in early education. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is only having to take one class during my senior year.
Hello, my name is Hannah Hill. My parents are Jeff and Barbara Hill. After graduation, I plan to attend Christopher Newport University on a pre-physician assistant track with a biochemistry major. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is having the most amazing and supportive teachers pushing me to excel in everything I do.
Hello, my name is Miranda Janae Hill. My parents are Cecilia Randolph Hill. After school, I will be attending VCU and transferring to Penn State University. My fondest memory in Suffolk Public Schools is being honored to have the same teacher ninth grade and 12th grade year to impact me greatly, Mrs. Stacy Lau.
Hi, my name is Frank Ashley Horton. My parents are Megan and Frank Horton. After graduation, I plan...after graduation, I plan to join the United States Military. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory was marching with the Magnificent March of Augustus.
Hello, my name is Chelsea Hurst. My parents are Michelle and Terry Hurst. After graduation, I plan to attend Christopher Newport University to study electrical engineering and my fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is making friends laugh in Project Lead the Way.
Hello, my name is Imani Ireland. My parents are Duane and Robin Ireland. After graduation, I plan on attending Liberty University, major in exercise science. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory were all the pep rallies.
Hello, my name is Canice James. My parents are John and Denise James. After graduation, I plan to attend VCU to receive my bachelor's degree in biology with a pre-veterinarian track and run for their track team. My fondest memory is joining Nansman River's track team.
Hello, my name is Sarnay Nataya Julhar. My mother is Cynthia Jul. After graduation, I plan to attend Norfolk State University to pursue a degree in electrical engineering. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is being a member of CCLA and being able to present my star event on autism in the national conference.
Hello, my name is Deandre Kareem Jones. My parents are Tanya and Kareem Jones. After graduation, I plan to attend Old Dominion University and major in exercise science. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is going to all the pep rallies.
Hello, my name is Thilesha Kabe. My parents are Brenton and Stacy Kabe. After graduation, I plan to go to Old Dominion University to study nursing. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is meeting people I'll know I'll be friends with for life.
Hello, my name is Noah Kent. My parents are Marcy and Roland Kent. After graduation, I plan to attend James Madison University to major in accounting. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is AP Chemistry Labs with my lab partner, Everett Lee.
Hola. My name is Jaylen Gregory-Curtsey. My parents are Greg Curtsey and Kawana Jackie Jakes. After graduation, I plan to enroll in the United States Air Force. My fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools is having the ability to leave at 2:18 every day.
Hello, my name is Brendan Klein. My parents are Michael and Christina Klein. After I graduate, I wish to attend TCC, transfer over to Old Dominion University and study sociology. My fondest Suffolk Public School memory is getting to experience the system and having Ms. Debbie McIntosh look after me from ninth grade all the way to 10th...all the way to 12th grade.
Hello, my name is Ashley Marie Kahinka. My parents are David and Terry Kahinka. After graduation, I plan to go to TCC. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is Mr. Sterling's public speaking class and Mr. Bartholomew's finance class.
Hello, my name is Ernest Lanthorne. My parents are Gail and Ernest Lanthorne. After graduation, I plan to attend Lynchburg College. My fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools is working on the technical school...technical crew for plays.
Hi, my name is Everett Lee. My parents are Steven and Doris Lee. My older brother is Kendrick Lee. After graduation, I plan on majoring in biology and minoring in chemistry to pursue pre-dentistry at VCU. My fondest memory is AP Chemistry with my best friend, Noah Kent.
Hello, my name is Ben Leonard. My parents are Robert and Suzanne Leonard. After graduation, I plan to attend Virginia Tech's engineering program. My fondest memory in Suffolk Public School is playing varsity tennis.
Hello, my name is Olga Lopez. My parents are Gabriel and Olga Lopez. After graduation, I plan to attend Weber State University. My fondest Suffolk Public School memory is being in field hockey.
Hello, my name is Morgan Lowers. My parents are Kim and Mike. After graduation, I plan to attend Winthrop University and play softball there. My plan is to major in mass communications with broadcasting and a minor in Spanish. My fondest Suffolk Public School memory is winning regionals and competing at states with the softball team.
Hello, my name is John Thomas Lowry. My parents are Keith and Noel Lowry. After graduation, I plan to attend George Mason University to major in computer engineering. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is to be a part of Project Lead the Way.
Hello, my name is Carol Louse. My parents are Chris and Fondalouse. After graduation, I plan to attend the University of South Carolina and major in exercise science. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is winning my first state title on track and field.
Hello, my name is Joshua Marcietelli. My mother is Cassandra Devine. And after I graduate, I plan to attend Norfolk State University, marching in the band, major in electrical engineering. And my fondest memory was marching in the band.
Hello, my name is Cortland McClure. My parents are Sean and Robin McClure. After graduation, I plan to attend Paul Mitchell, Rudy and Kelly Academy. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is being a teacher cadet and having the opportunity My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is meeting so many amazing people.
Hello, my name is Macau McMillan. My parents are Keisha and Rashawn Wilson. After graduation, I plan to attend Old Dominion University and major in marketing. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is Spirit Week.
Hello, my name is Simone Miles. My parents are Monique and Will Miles. After graduation, I plan to attend VCU. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is meeting new friends and having Mr. Mack as my principal.
Hello, my name is Elaine Miller. My parents are Vince and Lauren Miller. After graduation, I plan to attend VCU. And my fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is Spirit Week and Homecoming Games.
Hello, my name is Emily Miller. My parents are Dawn and Earl Miller. After graduation, I plan to attend TCC and transfer to VCU to major in exercise sciences. My fondest memory at Suffolk Public Schools is being a part of the Nazman Theater Program.
Hello, my name is Raven Monae Mills. My parents are Fikira Mills and Rodney Mills. After graduation, I plan to attend ODU to major in exercise science. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is bonding with my basketball teammates and going to Myrtle Beach with my basketball teammates.
Hello, I'm Aja Moore. My parents are Shanta and Michael Moore. After graduation, I plan to attend Virginia Commonwealth University as a pre-dental student and a chem major. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is being chosen to be the yearbook editor under the teaching of Mrs. Young.
Hello, my name is Chance Maury. My parents are Chris and Chatney Maury. After graduation, I plan to attend TCC and earn my paramedics degree. My fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools is hanging out with my friends in the morning before class.
Hello, my name is Justin Naylor. My parents are Kalise and Roger Naylor. After graduation, I plan to attend college at VCU and major in forensic sciences. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is being able to play varsity soccer.
Hello, my name is Malcolm Nurse. My parents are Ann Nurse Davis and Marlon Levy. After graduation, I plan to attend VCU as an undeclared and then go into computer engineering. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is being able to come to school and see my favorite principal watch over his many students. I am proud to be a warrior.
Hello, my name is Kevin O'Brien. My mom is Patricia O'Brien. After high school, I'm going to be attending ODU for computer modeling and simulation. And my fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is Ms. Silvio's 10th grade history class. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Callie Param. My parents are Russ and Darlene Param. After graduation, I plan to attend James Madison University to major in history and justice studies. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is making friends that will last a lifetime and having Mr. Mack as a principal.
Hello, my name is Aaron Parker. My beautiful parents are Nikita and Phyllis Parker. After graduation, I plan to join the Air Force Reserves and come back to attend ODU in the spring. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is being able to play basketball at Nazman River High School.
Hello, my name is Diane Parker. My parents Andrew Hart. After graduation, I plan to go to college and start art in childhood. My favorite memory of my school Public Schools memory is helping out with my teachers and kind of being like a teenage lady.
My name is Desiree Patterson. My parents are David Patterson, Dr. Melanie Patterson. After graduation, I plan to attend Old Dominion University and major in biology. And I would say my fondest memory is becoming a conference champion in soccer and hockey in Coach Hall's class.
Hi, my name is Desiree Polino. My parents are Christopher and Kimberly Mason. After graduation, I plan to acquire a law degree while attending James Madison University. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is being a part of Nazman Rivers' first robotics team.
Hello, my name is Antonio Perez. My parent is Tammy Perez. After graduation, I plan to attend Radford University and pursue science and business. And my fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory was playing volleyball for Nazman River High School.
Hello, my name is Christine Pinnell. My parents are Cindy and Adam Pinnell. After graduation, I plan to attend the University of Wisconsin in Milwaukee and major in architecture. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is the theater productions and being a part of the first robotics teams.
Hello, my name is Sydney Pressley. I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared. My parents are Julie and John Bartley. After graduation, I plan to attend school at East Carolina and double major in business and finance. However, I'm going to stay on a pre-med track and hopefully become a trauma surgeon. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory hasn't happened yet, it's going to be when I graduate.
Hello, my name is Zakia Rashid. My parents are Lynette and Anthony McDuffie. After graduation, I plan to attend the University of Miami on a full ride scholarship for track and major in exercise physiology. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is homecoming pep rally junior.
Hello, my name is Haley Reed. My parents are Byron and Francine Barnes. After graduation, I plan to take a year and participate in missionary work. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is being in algebra two at Ms. Davis.
Hello, my name is Susannah Reeves. My parents are Jennifer and Jeff Reeves. After graduation, I plan to attend ECU and later become an occupational therapist. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is having the most honest and well-rounded teachers to help me get where I am today.
Hello, my name is Zylan Renshaw. My mom's name is Teresa Dankmeyer. After I graduate, I plan to attend Radford University and major in music education. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is being a varsity cheerleader, competing at the cheerleading state championships and making everybody laugh.
Hello, my name is Amy Diane Rice. My parents are Debbie and Michael Rice. After graduation, I plan to attend Virginia Tech to double major in theater arts and English. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is when my theater team and I got the privilege to compete at the state competition in Charlottesville, Virginia.
Hello, my name is Alexis Rogers. My parents are Barry and Sandam Rogers. After graduation, I plan to attend James Madison University and major in accounting. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is being a part of Nazman River softball.
Hello, my name is Shania Sattler. My parents are Shabada and Kevin Sattler. After graduation, I plan to attend Old Dominion University and major in dental hygiene. And my fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is becoming a part of Nazman Rivers' girls' tennis team for all four years. Hello, my name is Nathan Sargent. And my parents are Maria and Jonathan Kindle. And after graduation, I plan on attending the University of Oklahoma with a National Merit Scholarship and majoring in petroleum engineering. And my fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools is being named the National Merit finalist.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Sharp. My parents are Eric and Gloria Sharp. I plan to attend VCU to major in chemistry. And my fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools is my first swim meet.
Hello, my name is Vera Shannard. My parents are Troy and Megumi Shannard. After graduation, I plan to attend VCU to major in political science. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is meeting some of my lifetime friends Xavier Williams, Therese Williams, and Morgan Burnett.
Hello, my name is Antonio Sims. My parents are Eric and Leslie Sims. After graduation, I plan on enlisting in the United States Army. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory was being a part of the varsity football team.
My name is Darius Smith. My parents' names are Kimberly and Gordon Smith. After graduation, I plan on attending ODU. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is freshman year lunches and participating in marching band and track.
Hello, my name is Lauren Ashley Smith. My parents are John and Cecilia Smith. After graduation, I plan to attend the University of Alabama while majoring in chemistry. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is playing Taylor McKessy in Nazman River High School's production of High School Musical.
Hello, my name is Brooklyn Spain. My parents are Thaddeus and Lakeisha Spain. After graduation, I plan to attend Virginia Military Institute with a major in international studies. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is having a close relationship with the administration and being corps commander of Air Force Junior ROTC.
Hello, my name is Naheej Anna Leah Stevens. My parents are Tiana and Philip Stevens. After graduation, I plan to attend ODU to major in criminal justice so I can become a forensic pathologist. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is laughing and talking with my friends in study hall.
Hi, my name is Jordan Stockman. And my parents are Thomas and Lynn Stockman. After graduation, I plan to attend James Madison University to major in international affairs and minor in intelligence analysis. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory was being able to travel to Italy through Suffolk sister cities last summer.
Hello, my name is Abigail Stupira. My mom is Lisa Guyer. After graduation, I plan to attend William &amp; Mary to major in international relations and national security studies. And my fondest SBS memory is being able to participate in artwork shops.
Hi, my name is Katie Marie Strickland. My parents are Tim and Terry Strickland. After graduation, I plan to attend a school for culinary arts and go to TCC for business. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is being a part of the theater productions and for going to Allstate choir this year.
Hello, my name is Christina Super. My parents are Jeff and Allison Super. After graduation, I plan to attend the College of Agriculture and Life Sciences at Virginia Tech and major in environmental sciences with a minor in green engineering. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is being the captain of the Nazman River Varsity Cheerleading Squad that helped lead the team to states and win second place.
Hello, my name is Charity Taylor. My parents are Byron and Sylvia Taylor. After graduation, I plan to go to Regent University to study film production, cinematography. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is the times we had in jazz band, having jam sessions and rapping for my fellow classmates.
Hello, my name is Morgan Leanne Thompson. My parents are Dr. Tracy and Jeffrey Thompson. After graduation, I plan to attend Christopher Newport University and major in biochemistry with a minor in leadership. My fondest Suffolk Public School memory is meeting new people and making friends.
Hello, my name is Trinity Mariah Torres. My parents are Estella and Angel Torres. After graduation, I plan to attend the College of William &amp; Mary. I plan to major in international relations with a minor in global policy. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is Beta Convention and VHSL theater competitions.
Hello, my name is Catherine Valentine. My guardians are George and La Ashley Valentine. After graduation, I plan to serve our country since I have enlisted into the Army National Guard. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is moving to Nazman River during my senior year and having the opportunity to meet new friends and have a counselor like Ms. Reed who kept me encouraged in striving for success.
Hello, my name is Brooke Vandwater. My parents are Angie Kennedy and Ken Vandwater. After I graduate, I plan to attend ECPI University and study physical therapy assistance. My fondest Suffolk Public School memory is joining Voice and working with Ed Mark.
Hello, my name is Desiree Walker. My parents are Paulette Dowler and Orlando Robinson. After graduation, I plan to join the Army and go to TCC. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is marching for the Nazman River, Magnificent March of Warriors as a dancer.
Hello, my name is Jordan Taylor West. My parents are David and Ruth West. After graduation, I plan to attend the University of Alabama and major in biological engineering. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is National Beta Convention with all of my friends.
My name is Mitchell Westall, son of Elliot and Jana Michelle Westall. I'm planning on going to George Mason University to study communications. And my fondest Suffolk Public Schools memories include Beta Convention and being the president of the Anchor Club.
Hi, my name is Brooklyn Wilkerson. My parents are Ella and Brooks Wilkerson. After I graduate, I plan to attend Boise State University. And my fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is managing the guys' soccer team.
Hello, my name is Landon Brooks Wilkerson. My parents are Ella and Brooks Wilkerson. After graduation, I plan on joining the Air Force. My fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools is the first time hearing the marching band play Lawrence Jam.
Hi, my name is Ethan Woodruff. My parents are Michael and Ann Woodruff. After graduation, I plan to attend Methodist University, major in biology and play baseball. My fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is playing baseball for Nazman River.
Hello, my name is Keela Worrell. My parents are Antoine and Jewel Worrell. After I graduate, I plan to go to Regent University to get a degree in computer animation. And my fondest Suffolk Public Schools memory is seeing the birds fly into this school every year.
Thank you, graduates. Some of our honor graduates were unable to be here tonight due to other commitments. Their information is included in your honor graduate packet. Thank you again for recognizing these wonderful students. Also, I think, the students, if you'll turn and look at your parents and give your parents a hand for the job that they have done. I also want to say how encouraging it is to the staff of Nazman River for so many students to say a fondest memory is working with a teacher in a particular class. So I thank the staff and the principal here at Nazman River as well.
I'd like to say to all the students, you're just beautiful, you're handsome, not just because you're in my borough, in the school in my borough, but I'd like to say to you, we congratulate you. we congratulate you. We are happy. And only a couple of weeks ago, we were held, said we were going to be held accountable, the school board, for what goes on in Suffolk public schools. I wish those persons would be here tonight to see what has happened out of 300 and some students. I'm sure there were others who were almost there, but we congratulate you. We are here for you and we expect the best out of you. So thank you so much.
Yes, I'd just like to say congratulations to all of our honor graduates. Very proud to be here this evening and be able to say that to you, having worked here at Nanceman River High School. And I'd also like to thank Ms. Crewe and Mr. Macklemore for making the logistics happen so this could, this could be presented this evening. And parents, thank you very much for all the support that you have provided, both to your students and to Suffolk public schools.
I want to say I am so proud of each and every one of you. I really am. For those, my missionary who's going off, I pray blessings for you. The students who are going to the military to serve, to protect us as well, my blessings are asked for you. But I'd also like to say to those students who are going to college and who are going to some other form of secondary education, just continue to do your best and be who you are. You are gifted and talented and beautiful inside and out. So all I can do is wish you the best from now and forever. Congratulations.
I'd like to say I'm very proud of every one of you also. I would also, I'd like to thank those of you who are going into the service or going to Tidewater Community College so that your parents don't have to mortgage their homes.
Not all. I was a part of Nanceman River High School for some 13 years. I served on the faculty here and I worked with many of these fine faculty members and with Mr. Mack. For many years, we go back a long way. And I am extremely proud of the work that Nanceman River continues to do and I will always have a special place in my heart for Nanceman River.
For those of you that are going on to college to major in education, I would guarantee you a job if you got your math degree and came back here to teach. Four years, we need math teachers. Thank you very much. Parents and students, at this time, we're going to take a short break. We have to, we have a meeting at 7:30, so we're going to reconvene in five minutes. If you'd like to stay for the meeting, we'd more than likely like you to be here, but if not, we can understand that you have other pressing engagements. Thank you for coming. We had a great night here tonight. Thank you. We'd like to call or regularly scheduled meeting for tonight and ask Mr. Copeland if he'd lead us in a pledge of allegiance again. Mr. Copeland? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can we have certification of the closed meeting, please?
Resolution of certification of the closed meeting of May 14th, 2015 pursuant to Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended.
So moved.
Board Member Bichard?
Yes.
Board Member Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board Member Barham?
Yes.
Board Member Mittnick?
Yes.
Board Member Skeeter?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Copeland?
Aye.
Chairman Dobransky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Do we have any speakers that sign up for tonight? No speakers tonight. We'll go on to reports by the superintendent. Nope, wrong. Certificate, no, reports by the superintendent. I'm sorry, I was late the first time.
Thank you and good evening. As you can see, the only thing that we have listed as far as a report are the special events, and you can find that on page 13. We do have our Suffolk PTA Council Annual Dinner on May 28th. Superintendent Starward Reception is on June 2nd. Retirement Banquet, in which we honor our retirees, June 4th. And of course, the high school graduations, June 6th. The last day of school is listed as June 12th.
Where is the PTA Annual Dinner this year?
The PTA Council Annual Dinner, Ms. Bradshaw, do you know?
We normally get an invitation.
We'll send something, we'll make sure.
Okay, all right.
Can you send out a list of those dates to us as well?
Yes, sir. And we'll also be sending out information regarding the logistics of graduation again this year.
Okay, we'll have, Board Members, if you'd look at the consent agenda and see if anything needs to be moved, the new business or unfinished business.
The chair moved that we accept the consent agenda.
Board Member Bichard?
Yes.
Board Member Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board Member Barham?
Yes.
Board Member Mittnick?
Yes.
Board Member Skeeter?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Copeland?
Aye.
Chairman Dobransky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Finished business, adoption of a financial plan for fiscal year 215, 216.
Yes, as many of, as each of you know, we were fully funded by the city council and it feels really good to say that. We were fully funded. Having said that, we are going to have Ms. Wendy Forsman, our executive director of finance, share with you what we ask that you adopt as our budget for 1516. Ms. Forsman?
Good evening.
If you'll turn to page 14, you'll see the presentation.
This evening, the budget we've got before you tonight for adoption is a total of $151.4 million. It includes $132.3 million for the operating fund, 11.5 for the grants fund, and 7.4 for the food services fund. Included in this budget is the new teacher scale that was proposed, as you can see here, from step zero through step 29 plus. So this scale will be adopted for all teachers.
Ms. Forsman?
Yes, sir.
Does that include every penny that we got from the city in that?
Yes, sir.
Every penny from the city is registered in that scale for 3 million?
3.886 million, yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
That, all of that is for the implementation of that teacher scale. It also includes Phase 1 support staff raises for those positions that were 20%, greater than 20% below the market. If you remember, in January, we had the folks from Evergreen come and they gave their presentation on their recommendations. So this budget also includes those positions that were more than 20% and they're listed here. In addition, as you remember, Phase 1 also realigns and regrades the information technology staff into levels, level 1, 2, and 3. So there'll be technology technicians, 1, 2, and 3, network technology technicians, 1, 2, and 3, and information systems technicians, 1, 2, and 3. There are some title-only changes in Phase 1, and they're listed here. Maintenance Helper becomes a Trades Worker. The term Secretary is removed completely from our job titles and the term Administrative Assistant is added, and that's for all school current secretaries. Legal Secretary and Administrative Secretaries will all become Administrative Assistants with the word school, legal, and administrative after the term. The Secretary to the Superintendent will become an Executive Administrative Assistant. The School Secretary Bookkeeper will become an Administrative Assistant Bookkeeper. Also, if you remember, with the state money that we received, the extra state money, there was a portion that gave us about $412,000. So at your request, we added to the budget to adopt the Phase 2 support staff positions. And those were the positions that were paid at greater than 19.5 to 10.6 below the market. And that next slide has the list of those, if you'll remember when we last met, we gave you this list. This is the list of those folks that are at 9.5 or greater, excuse me, 19.5 or 10.6 greater than, they're that much greater than, below the market value. So those positions are paid less than market value by those numbers. And I show you here the number of employees in those positions and the salary implementation costs that do include the benefits. And finally, in this budget, is the 1.5% raise for all support staff. So they are not listed, if they're not listed in these other positions, they will receive the 1.5% state raise and the 1% VRS phase-in raise. So if they're not listed, they get the 1.5% and the 1%. Are there any questions?
All the new positions identified according to the Evergreen report, is that what we're?
There are no new positions.
I don't mean that, I mean the change in the?
Changed titles, yes. Yes, those were the ones recommended by Evergreen. Yes. I will stress, and I'm glad you brought it up earlier, that when we talk about the fully funded amount of the roughly 3.9, I can't stress enough that all of that goes directly to the teachers, as was indicated in the proposed budget.
Absolutely.
It has not been my habit or hasn't been my experience to change anything. If we propose it, that's what we do. If we make, if there were going to be a change, you approve that change. But the money that we've requested in the proposed budget will be used specifically for teachers, the 3.9 million.
Do you mean teachers or do you mean all positions or just teachers?
Teachers for the adjusted salary scale that was presented.
Okay. The cost of that salary scale is the 3.886 that we received from the state, from the city. So that's why that is specific to that scale.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Forsman. Okay, can I get a motion to accept this budget?
I move that we accept this budget.
Board Member Bichard?
Yes.
Board Member Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board Member Barham?
Yes.
Board Member Mittnick?
Yes.
Board Member Skeeter?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Copeland?
Aye.
Chairman Dobransky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
New business, schedule a meeting for the board retreat.
Yes, as you know, traditionally, we have a retreat each year as we begin to plan for the new year. I have three dates that I'd like to just simply present to you. If those dates don't work, then obviously we can make changes and make the date that you suggest work. I have June 18th, which is a Thursday, June 24th, which is a Wednesday, or June 25th, which is a Thursday. And traditionally, we begin in the morning and usually finish up about 2, I think. Yes.
I can do June 18th, I'm not going to be available the other two days. Anybody have any problems with June 18th?
There's no problem with either that or the 25th. They can move pupil personnel, I guess. That was the only possible problem. Yeah.
We shouldn't have June pupil personnel.
No, we, yeah, I'd just move it to another day.
We do June 18th.
Well, either, either is fine. I just, it's fine.
June 18th, can get a motion for that.
Okay. I move that we have the retreat on June 18th, on Thursday.
Board Member Bichard?
Yes.
Board Member Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board Member Barham?
Yes.
Board Member Mittnick?
Yes.
Board Member Skeeter?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Copeland?
Aye.
Chairman Dobransky?
Yes.
Motion carried to schedule a school board retreat for June 18th. Time and location will be provided once that is scheduled.
Do we have any public speakers on non-agenda items? Public speakers on non-agenda, yes, sir. Come forward and state your name, address, and purpose.
My name is Lyle Story. I'm Sherry Story's husband, and we live at 4429 Cherokee Drive in Suffolk. Mr. Dobransky, Dr. Whitney, and other members of the school board. I'm a full-time professor at Regent University. I've taught at the graduate level for 37 years. In that time, I've also served as an administrative dean. I'm also very familiar that during that time, I've become knowledgeable about honor codes and consequences for dishonesty. I'd like to make a few comments to the full board apart from the emotions I feel. Like permission for about five or six minutes to raise some comments and ask some rhetorical questions. My wife, Mrs. Story, has been a loyal, innovative, creative, and effective teacher in both the IB and AP programs at Kings Fork High School for the last nine years. She's also well-respected nationally in various science and professional organizations, including biology, and herself has made professional development presentations and frequent national professional conferences and will continue to do so this summer. For the last two months, Mrs. Story has been dealing with a situation of egregious dishonesty on the part of two students in the International Baccalaureate Program. She didn't give zeros to the students. The students earned zeros for these tests. It has involved numerous hours of documentation, meeting with parents, phone calls with parents, ongoing scrutiny, numerous meetings with school administrators and Mr. Boone. At every administrative level, she has had constant support and backing. However, when it went to the Pupil Personnel Committee, her voice was strangely absent. No opportunity was allowed for her voice to be heard at this level. Parental voices seemed to win the day. Last Friday, she was informed in an impersonal and cold email that contained directives and recommendations in a punitive manner, as if she was the one who needed to change and comply. One of those directives required her to retest the students who had cheated. The committee provided no reasons for these directives and recommendations to her. In the same email, the committee upheld the in-school suspension implicitly acknowledging the academic dishonesty and yet directed her to make and administer another test. She was in a real dilemma. If she refused to comply with this directive, she would be guilty of insubordination with an impending firing in view. So she chose to immediately resign instead rather than compromise her own core values and integrity. How can she enforce the student honor code in both the Suffolk Handbook and the core values of the IB Handbook if she violates both codes? She just couldn't. As soon as she received these directives and recommendations, she called me and said that she just had to resign. I immediately agreed and fully supported her in her decision. I would have done the same thing in these circumstances. This has involved at least 30 hours of her time spread out over two months. I can't begin to express the emotional toll that this has taken on her. This incident should have been stopped dead in its track two months ago, certainly without ever reaching the level of the school board. I believe that the Suffolk School Board needs to do some deep soul searching as to what actually happened, why this action was taken, and the manner in which this issue and my wife were treated. For me as well as her, this represents a tragic series of events. One egregious incident has been followed by another. One egregious incident has been followed by another. Speaking as a Suffolk resident and fellow educator, I'd like to ask a couple rhetorical What is the message that current and future high school students learn from this series of events? Let's go ahead and cheat, and if we're caught, we'll be able to take another test. Yes means no, and no means yes, and furthermore, dishonesty has no real consequences. What are the implications of this action for all Suffolk teachers and their authority in the classroom for teachers who insist upon and practice an honor code? What are the implications of the decision for the IB governing body, which will review the Suffolk license this coming fall? And finally, how will the Suffolk public respond to its elected members of the school board for the failure to uphold academic integrity, failure to support a teacher, and failure to abide by its own policies? With respect, thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you, Mr. Story. Anybody else, any other citizen like to come forward and speak? Okay. If not, we'll go to business by board members. Ms. Barham, you'll be first today.
Busy time for our city. Couple of things. I was very proud to be at Booker T. Washington Elementary where they had their Living History Night, met a lot of interesting historical characters. I want to commend the student staff for such an outstanding job and also the faculty and staff for supporting them and the parents in that endeavor. Other things, Rookie Teacher of the Year recognition. I want to thank all those rookie teachers for their first year of service to Suffolk Public Schools. Hope they will remain with us, and I thank them personally for all they have done. And I'll make one other statement. Partners in Education had a wonderful luncheon, and we saluted over 100 different partners in education. Want to thank them personally for all their partnerships during the year, all the volunteer hours that they served, and they really made a difference to our students.
Ms. Bouchard.
I don't have anything.
Skeeter.
I don't, I don't have anything. We'd like to thank the city council for approving that budget of our monies to come to education.
Ditto.
Thank you.
Amen.
That's it.
I'd also like to thank the city council for fully funding the school board budget, and it was enjoyable to work cooperatively with city council. And I'd like to recognize Roger Fawcett. He and I had several meetings, and I felt like we had his full support for the budget. We all received an email on March 23 from Lisa Quinn, Department Chair in Career and Technical Education at Kings Fork High School, and she was asking for us to review the field trip policy as it stands. And I'm going to ask Dr. Whitney if you could make sure that that's on the agenda for the retreat.
Certainly.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'd just like to say thank you also to my city councilman, Mr. Ward, and thank you for Mr. Dooman and several of the other councilmen, who Mr. Bennett, who works very closely, and the mayor. We appreciate the fact that we have this relationship that we do that's getting better, I believe, every day, and I'm looking forward to working with the people that we have elected for the people who elected us. Thank you.
Thank you, I have nothing to say. Everybody's explained my position here well, thank you. This time, we're going to go to, so we can't go to certification, a closed meeting, can't we? Board Members, please look at your informational items, see if there's anything that needs to be brought up at this time. All right, after we get done, we're going to close this meeting, go into closed session. We're going to have to wait until we get back. Okay, this meeting will be adjourned. Can we get a motion to go into closed session?
Motion is needed to go into a closed meeting to discuss the following item and subject pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended. The discussion and or consideration of the personnel report and related information, all of which is authorized by Section 2.2-3711 I of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended.
So moved. Second.
Board Member Bouchard.
Yes.
Board Member Brooks Buck.
Yes.
Board Member Barham.
Yes.
Board Member Mitnick.
Yes.
Board Member Skeeter.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Copeland.
Aye.
Chairman Dubrasky.
Yes.
Motion carried.
We are excused to go into closed session at this time.